We'll call the April tenth, two thousand and nineteen, committee to hold meetings order. First item is, roll call please.
Here.
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 Yeah.
Here.
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 Thank you very much.
Item number C, discussion items, first one will be solid waste delivery agreement with Otter Tail County, and Guy Taylor's going to give us an update.
Thank you, your honor. Good morning, council members. We are required to enter into a solid waste agreement with Otter Tail County, so I'll call on Chris McConne here in a minute to just give you a brief overview of that agreement. So in the end, we'll just ask for a recommendation to the council to authorize the city administrator and the mayor to sign the documents that are related to entering into this agreement. We'll have Chris McConne come up now and just give a brief overview of that.
Morning, Chris.
Morning, commissioners or council members. So just, I think you all maybe know this, but I'll just go through a brief recap. You received a letter in your packet that just explains what the agreement is for, and several years ago, the city of Ferguson Falls collected and incinerated its own waste at the incinerator at the regional treatment center. So now, fast forward to two thousand and nineteen, there's five counties that own a joint powers authority that burn waste at the incinerator in Perron, and so as part of that, we're working through a waste designation ordinance which basically ensures us the delivery of that waste. So without any more information, I'll open it for questions.
Thanks for the update. Chris, any questions, committee? For Chris?
It's fairly straightforward. We have no, we have an obligation to the county, so.
Correct. Well, with that, then, we're looking for a recommendation to the council to enter into a waste delivery agreement with the Otter Tail County. Do we have?
I'll watch for that.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Anthony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A poll, same sign. Motion's carried. Thanks, Chris, for the update.
Thank you.
Item number two is two oh seven North Union Avenue. Is that Guy, you're hitting this one too?
Yeah, thank you, your honor. It became known to the city earlier this year that the owner of two oh seven North Union has passed away. The house has fallen into disrepair, and we've got some charges that are pending against the property for snow removal and grass cutting. And so as a creditor in the city, we can initiate the probate process. So we'll be asking for a motion to direct the city attorney to start that probate process, and then to appoint the city administrator as a personal representative of the property so that we can recover the cost through sale of the property, and then dispose of the property as we see fit.
Okay. Thanks for the update. Any questions for Guy on that? Pretty straightforward as well. Any questions? If not, we're looking for a motion to proceed.
I'll make the motion.
We'll take Chris the first, and then second?
Sure.
Thanks, Brian. Any other discussion on that item? All righty, all emotion, or all in favor, excuse me, say aye.
Aye.
A poll, same sign. Motion's carried. Thank you. I should go back. Item number one, would you guys like that on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Or would I have number two consent agenda as well?
Yes.
Okay, very well, thank you. Item number three, RT fee, RTC, excuse me, Phase Two demolition update and timeline, and Andrew and Brian are maybe going to give us updates on that?
Yeah, thank you, your honor, members. I'm just going to give a quick update and then turn it over to Brian to talk about timeline as we move forward with Phase Two. At the last several meetings, I've been talking about waiting for the green light, so to speak, from SHIPO in relation to being agreeable to our mitigation strategy related to Phase Two. And we'll announce this morning that last week, we did receive that letter from SHIPO that indicated that they're in agreement that our mitigation strategy, which is the master plan of the Kirk Pride campus, is sufficient for us to proceed. Really, that's, that's the requirement that statute provides, is that they in writing agree to our mitigation strategy, and that much has been done. So with that being said, we are in the process of putting everything together to proceed as the council's previously authorized us to go out for plant, or plans, inspects, and bids contingent on that final letter that we have received. So I'll turn it over to Brian to talk about the timeline now associated with, with these actions going forward.
Thank you, Andrew. Good morning, members. Yes, now that we have that, and March eighteenth, the city council authorized us to plan to advertise for bids for this project. That being said, pending once we got this approval, beginning next week, it's going to be the start of a twenty-one day advertisement for bids for this project. It's well beyond the thresholds that requires us to do the twenty-one day competitive bidding. Wednesday, May eighth, excuse me, Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, part of the bid package and everything, we're requesting a mandatory walkthrough of the campus for all potential contractors that will be on the plan owner list. That'll be at one P.M. at the site. This is how we done, conducted at Phase One as well. Wednesday, May eighth, at two P.M. is the bid opening for this project. We're hoping contingent on favorable prices to have a council award recommendation anticipating Monday, May twentieth, for awarding of this project. If awarded, we're going to try to move as quickly as we can to get the contract docs processed. We estimate three months, but I think it's going to be like more four months to complete this project if awarded. That would put the projects in late, late falls, kind of gearing about September thirtieth, if not longer, for substantial completion. Final completion would be early next summer, generally about June thirtieth for this project. That's as the schedule sits right now, so. Just want to give you a little update. Any questions on it?
Is there, what would be left over, then, to get substantial completion in June of next year? Will it take time?
There could be some miscellaneous paving. If we're going to do turf establishment, that gets to be, once you get later projects, the seat dates and everything, it just helps carry it over to make sure we can get adequate roll, things of that nature. But yeah, substantial would probably be defined, all the buildings removed and disposed of, and just pretty much restoration items.
Thank you.
Any questions? If not, thanks for the update, and we don't need any action on that this morning. Item number four, possible preservation project at the Ferguson Falls Kirk Pride, and Mr. Kwame's going to address us with.
It was an email that I received from a fellow named Fitzy Heimdahl, and you should have received that, or get that email in your, in your packet. Looking for my copy, which I had right here. And basically, what I'm looking for today is some conversation about how we might get a good deal on something here. What the, Fitzy is a director for the North, Northern Bread Rock Historic Stewardship, and it's a group that works with AmeriCorps people, and they, they do lots of different kinds of things that include things as simple as cleanup to things as more complex as masonry and rebuilding of, of properties of various kinds. Because we have a historical property here, and they do a fair amount of historical property restoration work, that's what put us on his radar, and he contacted me to ask if perhaps there'd be some way that their group could be involved in a project here. Some of the kinds of things that they would do are assessment work, site stabilization work, they've worked with masonry, and cemetery restoration, and chinking and daubing of brick, and rebuilding, things like that. There's quite a long list of projects that they've done in Minnesota, and a lot of things up in the Duluth area, and Fitzy happens to be from Duluth, but they've worked all over the state, a number of different kinds of projects. And it just seems like what we could, we could benefit from having them come here, and I guess a couple of questions that I've got to put before you today is what kind of a project we might like to have them work on if they were to come. And then the second one would be working with a group like this, you know, he contacted me, and he's interested in wanting to see something done, but I wouldn't necessarily see myself as the person to pull this together. I would expect this would be something that would be connected and coordinated through the city staff, and so just wanted to have some understanding of how that would go. I could take this a few more steps and have some more conversations with him, but at some point, I would expect that this would be something the staff would handle, and so I'm looking for some input there as well. So I'll leave it at that for the moment, and then, and then see what kind of conversations there is.
All right, thanks, Scott, for the update, and I guess I'd open up to the council and all of our staff if we have, as Mr. Kwame's suggested, if there's any comments regarding where we go from here with this potential, Mr., what's his name, Fitzy? Is that right? Mr. Fitz?
Mr. Ruffer has a question.
Give my time to, to the British gentleman.
Obviously, they're looking for as little as ten thousand dollars. That would imply, obviously, they're looking for some money, so I, I think, you know, before I would commit to anything, I would want to know exactly what, what it's going to cost and who's going to fund that. And, and I would also question, you know, how much, city staff have a lot on the plate currently in a variety of different projects, and I would ask probably the city administrator, you know, do we have time to be doing this, you know, on top of every, all the hours that we're putting into the Kirk Pride this year, anyway?
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Councilmember Hicks, you're exactly right. We do have our hands full with three major road projects this summer in the Phase Two Anything's possible. I mean, I won't sit here and say we couldn't get it done because I think we have the staff to do it, but we are stretched pretty thin given the, given the full plate this summer, and given the fact that we generally run staffing pretty minimally, as minimally as we possibly can, and we still have some vacancies in some of our departments, and so it would be tough to carry another project, but I wouldn't sit here and say it's not possible. I think that would be, I would be misleading you if I said that.
And that's what I, I mean, I think we have a series of vacancies, and, you know, this is likely to fall under, you know, engineering and public works, and I think engineering has got, they're coming into that busy time of year, so I think if we're going to do anything, it, you know, we have to be cognizant of that. We have a vacancy in community, and we have a vacancy now in planning, so it's not like there's going to be any help there.
You know, to me, it would seem, you know, please chime in, but with potentially moving forward to the master plan for the Kirk Pride and Phase Two, I think this may be something we could revisit when we are a little farther along Phase Two, and then also have that master plan that, you know, is going to be working on up there to, to probably reengage these folks, potentially had a, a deeper discussion at a later date when we know a little more of what that master plan looks like, because I think we're, in not too long time, you know, we'll have some information from that master plan that we'll be able to utilize and use for the remaining buildings up there, so. If that's, that's my kind of thought, I, I think it's great to have them in our back pocket, but I don't know if we're ready to move tomorrow and spend the money and get them here, but.
And you mentioned spending the money. Just wanted to give you an update. The holding funds that we did have, you know, we started out with one point one million dollars. With the commitments we already have against that this year, we're down to a little over forty thousand left, so we are running out of that, and that's what we use to, you know, if we have to board something up, pay the electricity, the mowing around the building, we do that. So that's just some of my concern is, we can't be thinking of that money any longer because it's basically gone. But that's what it was for, too. We used it, you know, over these last number of years, so, so just an update.
And I may be wrong on this, but from what I understand, for that money that he's talking about there, if we use that for any, we cannot use that for any improvements on the building that would be considered a benefit for a future developer?
Different pot of money.
Okay.
Right.
Go ahead, Bill.
You're exactly right. No, these monies are unrestricted, the what we're going to have about forty thousand left, they are unrestricted, and that issue with a developer is only if you have one, you know, that you're actually going to impact and do something that'll benefit a private party. So for us doing our ongoing maintenance, that's not an issue, of course.
I think, you know, what you said, Justice, is pretty dead on, and then that would help us determine what kind of project, if we had, if we reengaged them again, what kind of project would be most beneficial, rather than just deciding on something now just because it's here. So I think that's a pretty good idea.
Any?
Yeah, I would, I would piggyback on that, and, you know, I mean, most of the building in my mind is going to be deconstructed, you know, but there are, you know, for instance, the tower, if the tower stays around, that might be a good place to focus their efforts. And to me, it seems like this project would be kind of right up the alley of the Friends of the Kirk Pride, as far as a fundraiser, you know, if they're looking for money to bring this group in, that would be a good project, and then perhaps they could provide some, some of the volunteer effort to lessen the load on city staff when that time does come, when and if. So, yeah, I would, I would say we wait to, and just, just see how the project progresses and go from there.
Okay. So is it, is it fair consensus that we'll put this in our back pocket until we have that master plan, and then we can bring this back before the, before us and review at that time?
I could just make another couple of comments.
Sure.
And not to necessarily change what you just said at all, but I think that what Tom had mentioned, as far as the central tower being kind of the focus of the long-term interest of the people, that there isn't, there isn't any threat of that ever being removed, that we've all agreed that that's going to stay, I think that would have been, or that would be, I should say, a, a good place to start, and that for this group to come in and spend a week cleaning it up and making it possible for people to visit, get a, look inside and have a tour of it, there'd be a number of ways that they could spend some time there. It would be a good deal for the city and a good deal all around. I didn't come with a plan in mind, any, anything detailed at all. I haven't spoken with Fitzy and tried to lay out any kind of hope for anything. I thought we'd better see where it went here first, but it just seems like it would be a real good deal for us. We'd get, we'd get a lot for our money, put it that way. I think that Tom's suggestion to use a fundraiser, whether it was the Friends of the Kirk Pride or any other group, to put the money together for it is not a bad idea, not a bad approach. I think that it wouldn't hurt to maybe get a little more detailed information from this group as to whether they can do things like molder remediation, for example, or, you know, some other things that are maybe more technical. If all they can do is clean up and put things in a wheelbarrow, that may, that's too limited, but if they can handle something a little more technical, I think that would be good to know. And to that end, I thought I'd at least like to try and follow up with him and tell him, you know, how we, what we talked about today and what kind of options there might be.
Well, to that, do you, do you, I mean, to his points, I guess, in my opinion, I wouldn't be against knowing a little bit more of what, what they're envisioning for that money, and I think it's fair to say, as Mr. Ruffer pointed out, that the tower would be probably the first place we would start, but not committing any dollars or commitment to find out maybe some more information on this and then come back with that?
I think they'll be fine, and I think equally explore, I, I like Councilmember Ruffer's idea that the Friends of the Kirk Pride had raised the money that's needed for this. I, I'm absolutely not going to spend any of the forty thousand dollars because once that's gone, any cost to the Kirk Pride are to the citizens of Ferguson Falls, and that goes on their taxes, so.
Correct.
The one, the one concern I got right now is, we have no developer set for the tower or the horseshoe, and we start going in there doing plaster repair, you know, masonry repair, everything on the inside of the building. Nobody's in there, nobody's heating it. The cold weather is still going to have effect on whatever work is done on the inside of that building, so you could turn around, and I'd like to know what's going to happen if we turn around and do this work, and it sits for another five years, and the humidity is still in there, and all the cold weather in the middle of the winter is still in there, how's that going to affect? Is all that repair work going to last? You know, you could turn around and put this money into something, but until you start heating that building, we're right back to where we started from, and a lot of that deterioration is from it sitting there with the humidity and the cold, and is it a right time to do it until you, somebody takes over that building where that building is actually heated? Otherwise, I mean, I own a cabin, hot, cold, hot, cold, all the time, things start to come apart. And, you know, it's, until that building is heated, I just foresee doing work in there like that, maybe other than cleanup, is a factor. It may be something that just pops apart just as soon as you put it together.
It's very noted, and, and, I mean, we've, we've noticed that in the past, but I think, you know, for, to be fair, if this group is interested, I think, you know, I'm okay with what Mr. Hicks said, is they want to reengage and find out some more information. We're certainly not committing dollars or staff time, and secondly, if, if it is something the council wants to proceed with, I would, I would concur that if there's outside groups that are Kirk Pride and such, I want to fundraise and put up the money. I think, you know, it'd be a good step forward for them to, you know, have a project in place to impact up there, so at this point, I don't think, you know, we'll, we'll move it to the, or should, do we need to move it to the agenda for any reason, or just have?
As I think, Councilmember Kwame, reach back out to them and the Friends of the Kirk Pride.
Scott?
Sure. I'll do a little more, well, at least contact Fitzy, let him know what we talked about today, see if he's, maybe they don't even have a opening in their calendar to come anytime soon, and it's very exploratory, but I'll at least find out where they are, what they're able to do. I'll contact Friends of the Kirk Pride, see if they're willing to do any fundraising and come back with that information.
All right. Thanks, Scott, for doing that. Then we'll move on to item number five, virtual reality technology for RTC Phase Two demolition, and Ryan V. Locke is going to address us. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, your honor. Good morning, members of the council. Before this item, before this morning is an item from the historic preservation, sorry, Heritage Preservation Commission. At their March meeting, while having discussion about the RTC and the, the master plan and in the Phase Two, the, the commission had an idea of having somebody come in and do some filming of the Phase Two building, so the intent would be for, to hire a company to come in, actually do, if you're familiar with what you see real estate now, where you could kind of get the three D tour of, of a home, same type of thing with, with the Phase Two buildings. Reached out to a company that was suggested, a gentleman by the name of Paul, who runs Twin City Visuals, and he put together kind of a proposal for me, and it would be a three D virtual walkthrough tour of the Phase Two deconstruction, the ten buildings that encompass about two, just under two hundred and one thousand square feet. So the, the lion's share of the cost would be actually putting together this sort of large virtual tour. Then they, how it, how it works is these, they have to create models for it, and these models can be no more than ten thousand square feet because of size, they would all get linked together, and then for easy transitioned viewing, additional staff that, of theirs that would need to come in and do it, they're anticipating about a seven-day process. It would take about seventy hours on site, and then additional ten hours of post-production, all for a cost of, right around ten thousand dollars. We would have to figure out where that money would come from. The initial idea was maybe West Central Initiative Changewakers grant, could maybe fund part of that, but they've wound that program down. It may end up coming back next year, but that, that is not something we could use for funding, so, so that's something we would have to, to look at. The Heritage Preservation Commission just, they voted, they wanted at least to bring this to the council for your guys' discussion, and I certainly could continue a little bit more discussion with Paul and kind of see exactly what all this encompasses, but I just wanted him to sort of give us just a quick, you know, what's it going to cost? And so we're looking at just about ten thousand dollars to do this work, so with that, I will open it up to your guys' discussion.
Don't you go first this time?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Ryan, for the update.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tom.
The first thing that popped into my mind is that I believe a local gentleman, Seth Simonsen, offers a similar service. I know he's mentioned it to me in the past, so in the interest of, of shopping locally, we would want to get, I'm not, I don't know the name of his business off the top of my head, but it's Seth Simonsen, so. And, and it's, it's, it's an intriguing idea, you know, I think it, it seems like it's a a good, a good compromise between, you know, those that, that want to move ahead with the, the deconstruction and those that don't. At least, you know, this way it would, there'd be preservation of it in its, you know, current visual form, anyway. I'd, I'd want to, you know, maybe see if we can get more cost estimates first, you know, I, I bucket the price a little bit, and then I guess my next question would be for Bill. I mean, is there funding in, in any, is it just that forty thousand dollars that we'd have to work with at this point? Okay.
Yep, that would be it.
Yeah, so I guess I would just want to see some more estimates and, and, and go from there.
Thanks for the comments, Mr. Ruffer.
Mine was more, can we, can we fund this out of the grant money, you know, for the demolition?
It would be a Brian question, and he's shaking his head. I'd, I doubt it.
Convince the state that this would be ineligible expenditure.
And if I could add, too, just with the schedule in the RTC, however the council wants to proceed, if you get a different quote, but once we get to a contract award with a contractor and everything, if you proceed with this, this has to be completed prior to that, because if not, if we have a contract, we're opening ourselves up to damages from a contractor for delay, so something to think about.
I was just, both of my concerns have been touched on, one being the schedule and not interfering with the project that we're laying out, and two being the cost with the dwindling funds, but the other thing, and maybe if we get other quotes, it would be different, but what I, when I read through this, you know, and what doesn't necessarily jump out at you, but there's a hosting fee that is an ongoing fee, that's forty dollars per model per year, which is eight hundred dollars a year from now until the end of time, that we want people to be able to access this and, and view the models, so we have to keep in mind that there's more than just the initial ten thousand dollar cost, and this will long predate, or, or run well beyond the time that these funds exist and that we have these dedicated sources of funding, so we will have to continue to fund things if we're going to make it available for public viewing, and certainly if we're going to do this work, we want to allow the public to access that and to see it for, you know, many, many years to come. So just, just to keep that in mind as we're talking about dwindling resources and, and moving forward on a, on a fairly well-defined timeline and all of those things, so that was my two cents.
Your honor, I would maybe add, going back to kind of a similar, to point four that we discussed, maybe this is something that the Friends of the Kirk Pride could look at, and rather than this Phase Two, but actually start the process for preservation of kind of the horseshoe and the tower, you know, so that we get ahead of any, you know, timeline or, or any further deterioration in those buildings, you know, that, you know, if the Friends of the Kirk, and then the Friends of the Kirk Pride could take it on board to host it going forward.
Go ahead, Caroline.
I guess I had the same concerns, but then also, like, who's going to host the, who's going to have that package or whatever to, is it the museum that's going to have it for viewing? Is it the city that's going to have it for viewing? Can we charge for it? I mean, that, we could charge for it, that would help cover that eight hundred, hopefully, but those were just a couple of my thoughts on it, too.
Good, good questions. I don't know if I have the answer, and who?
I don't think we have the answer.
At this point, no, this is very preliminary, just to kind of see if the council has the update for the cost and for doing the work on it, so.
Well, it sounds like, if I'm here, at this point, we don't have the update for the cost, but would entertain, maybe we could contact that local person and, and see what that would look like, and I think, I think the, the purpose of doing it makes sense, but, you know, we got to outweigh, obviously, the downside, which is the cost, so. I, I think you could bring it back, but I think we need to be clear, we're, we're sticking on the timeline schedule, so it would have to be done in a timely manner.
Yeah, I certainly could, could reach out to Mr. Simonsen and see if we could maybe get something back before you get your next committee hold meeting in two weeks.
Time to do something else.
Yeah, and just to kind of, you know, piggyback on what Anthony said and what I said earlier, too, that, you know, this, this seems like a great opportunity for the Friends of the Kirk Pride to really be directly involved in the preservation, so I would, I would challenge that group to, I mean, this, this is a prime opportunity right here to, to help with that preservation opportunity, so I'll just make that, put that out there and see what we can do.
Okay. Any action we need to request, then, or are we just, Ryan, maybe we come back with an update if you get some updated information?
On behalf, come back in two weeks with that information.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on then to item number six, two thousand and nineteen lifeguard agreement. Steve Plaza's here to address us with, we're looking for a recommendation of the council to approve and entering into a contract with the YMCA for our two thousand and nineteen lifeguard service at Pebble Beach, which we've had a longstanding contract with them for that, so.
Correct. Before you is our annual contract with the YMCA to put lifeguards out at Pebble Beach. They'll, they'll be there seven days a week from 1:30 to 5:30. The increase is due of $2,500 is due to Emily over at the YMCA asked during busy times, they'll bring out a third lifeguard, because right now it's staffed with two. You know, hot days, you know, forest will die, gets extremely busy if it's a warm day. They just want to bring out a third lifeguard. Other than that, all the, the agreement is, is the same as it has been in the past. We're looking for your recommendation to approve that agreement so we can have lifeguards at Pebble Lake Beach this summer.
Thanks, Steve. We'll open up for questions, comments, or discussion. Hearing none? Okay. With that, then, I guess we'll, all in favor to move this to the council? Oh, sorry.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Getting ahead of myself, sorry. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion is carried. Would you like that to go on the consent agenda? Item number seven, thank you, Steve. City code codification, Mr. Brimse.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Members, not a more exciting topic at 7:00 AM than this. So I'm going to do my best to keep us on here. But essentially, what codification is, is pulling all of your ordinances together into an easy-to-use reference book called the city code. I think most of you have them under your desks. The last time we did that process was back in 1991, so almost 30 years. And since then, we've done a piecemeal approach where when an ordinance is passed, we do our best to try to put it into the right place every couple of years. And, and really, what that ends up leading to is, is a confusion of ordinances, conflicting ordinances, outdated ordinances. And so we reached out and consulting with our city attorney to American Legal Publishing Company. They are the partner company with the League of Minnesota Cities and currently work in over 250 Minnesota cities. I've worked with them in other states as well. Very good, reputable company. They are the same company that did this work for us back in the 90s. A few more background, or a little more background, I guess. The city, since 2009, has spent almost $60,000 in ordinance publication costs. Having a resource like American Legal Publishing, they would going forward be able to provide model ordinances for the city. They would be able to give us the, the best code language to use. They will go through our entire code book, and we codify it based on what we have to work with, based on current state statutes and other statutes. They will review all of the ordinances that are on the books for the city to ensure that they're consistent with state and federal law, and also consistent with one another. Because as you pass ordinances over, you know, a 30-year period, you're going to, you're bound to start passing things that conflict with one another. And so ensuring that everything's good to go and making our code book new, fresh, updated, and compliant with state and federal law, we're recommending that we move forward with the codification process again with American Legal Publishing Company. The other really nice thing about American Legal is they host this on their website. And ironically, I was just maybe criticizing that with the last item, but they host this on, on the city's website, and it allows people to search through the ordinances. So for example, you could pull it up, and if you want to find all the ordinances related to dogs, you type in dogs, and it pulls up only the ordinances that use that language or associated with, with dogs. It makes it a lot easier for people who are wondering if they can have chickens in their backyard to, to search that way rather than to pick up the phone and call. A lot of people are moving towards that online presence and platform. And it's very user-friendly. The other nice thing that they have now, too, is currently, when you're looking through ordinances, if you're wondering what a definition means, five pages deep into an ordinance, you have to scroll all the way back to the top. In this format, you'd click on the word and the definition as it relates to that ordinance would pop up in a box. And so it makes, it makes it very user-friendly and, and easy to understand and, and know what the ordinance implications are as people are looking through them. So I promise to try to keep it as exciting as possible, so I will stop there. But looking at the, the dollars, we're, about $19,000 is the estimated cost. There's a one-time charge of $750 to convert the code language to that searchable format on the internet, and then a $495 fee to have that hosting service and updating those ordinances on an annual basis. This would be a three-year contract, and then after that, you have the ability to go year after year or enter into another term like that. We have a great finance director, and he has found the money in the budget to do this work, so it would not have any implications outside of the current 2019 budget.
And part of that, Andrew and Lynn did put in money for part of this as well, in the ordinance budget. So they were planning ahead for that, too, so.
Thanks for the information and the update. Any questions we have for the?
Maybe, Your Honor, I could ask Blaine if she has anything to add. She's done all the work on this. I'm just maybe stealing the credit here, but if she wants to add anything, I think it'd be a fair opportunity.
As you guys know, we do a lot of ordinances. From 2015 to 2018, you guys have 61 ordinances. It's a lot. And they do come at a price because of the publishing costs. And we've been doing, you see that we've gone to more summary things for publication to try to keep the cost down. But it does take, code, code takes a ton of community development time, the building and zoning time, city attorney time, administration time. And having this updated will really help us pull that information together, especially when we're having some vacancies in these positions and having that, more people want to go online and give us a phone call. So it would save a lot of staff time, too, and save a lot of publication costs.
Very good. Thank you.
Actually, we're kind of excited.
You should have started with me.
Ms. Kwame, Jim?
Well, I'd like to offer that motion.
Okay.
In the first place. And then I see this as a real positive step for the city. And in my work, I have to contact cities all over the state for ordinance questions every day. And being able to go online, that's where I see a real long-term value in this. Being able to go online and get the answers you need in a quick way where you can download things and print things and get what you need. It's incredibly convenient, and so I very strongly support this and see it as a real good thing for the city.
All right. So we got a motion to, we have a second by Jim.
I got a quick question.
Question. Go ahead, Caroline.
That annual fee, does that include, like, if we pass another ordinance and it might conflict with another one, do they flag that and let us know?
Yes. Well, every time we submit something to them, they have a staff attorney that review it.
Okay.
Whether it would conflict with anything. And if it does, they'll give us suggestions. If we use their model ordinances, there's no cost. So, I mean, that's kind of what we would, instead of developing our own, we really need to be following more in line with the model ordinances. It would save a lot of city attorney time, too.
We'll need to reinvent the wheel.
Exactly.
We have a question over here or comment? Okay. Hearing none, then all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. That motion is carried, and I'm assuming we put that on the consent agenda as well. All right. Move in line right along. Item number eight, airport taxi lane project. Mr. Revar.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Before you is in regards to airport taxi lane project. This was presented a few months ago. SCH has substantially completed the project plans and specifications. If you can turn to the screen, I just want to give you a little recap what we're referring to on this project here. Here, sir, is not me. I'll walk up here. Looking at the plan, just to give you a point of reference, Truck Highway 210. This is our airport grounds. Airport drive comes in here. This is our main internal AD building. The shaded area right here is the new alignment for the taxiway that we're referring to, this hatched area, also associated with project. This is existing one that's planned to be removed with this project. As noted, this, this was reported on our recent 5010 inspection. It's a high priority. So yes, the council ordered plans and specs. Plans are substantially completed. The estimated probable construction cost is $430,000. Therefore, once again, we're required to do a 21-day publication. We set a bid opening for May 9th, 2019 at 2:00 PM. Once we get these, once we get the actual numbers, just like every other previous airport project, we'll package everything up and submit it to the state for a funding share agreement between the feds and the states. The second page there outlined kind of the total project cost breakdown accordingly. With this project, we're estimating a federal grant share of about 90%, which pretty much equates in a total funding breakdown of about $510,000 of our airport entitlement fund draws. States, we're estimating 5% share, about 20, that would equate to $28,200. And same, our city local share is estimated to be about $28,300. This, of course, would be funded through our airport 456 funds. Sufficient funds are available to proceed with this project. So at this time, I'm requesting city council accept the project's plans and specifications for public improvement 9346. And I'm also requesting authorization to advertise for bids as well.
Thanks, Brian, for that.
Any questions?
Any questions? All of us are looking for a motion.
I'm looking for a motion, but I have a question. Just, just out of interest, how many of those entitlement dollars do we have left, or is there, are we carrying over anything?
We try to carry over as much as we can. We have a capacity at the fourth year, every year we receive $150,000. For, you can carry those for three years. Fourth year, you can have a capacity of $600,000. We have sufficient funds. We'll double check. If not, just like previously when we acquired snow removal equipment, other airports loaned us their entitlement funds. So it's a very good program.
So we're not needing to borrow those funds or loan them?
Not, not with this project. If we were adding another capital improvement when we were planning this project, we figured we would be borrowing some of those ones.
Good. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion or questions?
Just a comment. Brian, are you aware of the plans at the Detroit Lakes Airport and what they're doing up there at all?
As far as the cap improvement project, or?
Yeah.
Um, no, I'm not.
As I understand it, there's a major overhaul in the works for the Detroit Lakes Airport coming up within the next two years. And their airport's actually going to be closed for a period of time because of the extent of the project. And I just, I didn't have, I don't, I know it's coming, but I didn't know the dates. I thought maybe you would.
No, I could check into that, but no, I'm not, I'm not aware of what that, what they would be doing.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Or motion on the floor to vote on?
All in favor to move this to the council, say aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion is carried. Do you guys like that on the consent as well?
Yeah.
Item number nine, 2019 mill and overlay seal and coat project. Brian, you're up again.
Yes, thank you. Just like typical years past, requesting a few items. This is in regards to our 2019 mill and overlay improvement projects and our 2019 seal coat improvement projects. We've been identifying, working with other staff, finding candidates to receive this annual application of either mill and overlay and seal coats. We do this on an annual basis. This is levied funds. We're currently looking for the mill and overlays per our city policy and how we disperse these funds. We're looking, locating candidates in the third ward. So therefore, once we find those candidates, we're going to start preparing the plans and specifications along with our budgetary amounts. In 2019, we levied, we have budgeted $204,000 for mill and overlay and approximately $108,000 for seal coats. This, these projects could be a combination thereof. It depends on what our needs are right now, if perhaps we're doing more mill and overlays or seal coats for the particular street candidates. So at this time, I'm requesting initiate public improvement 5324, the 2019 mill and overlay project. I'm also requesting order the plans and specifications for public improvement 5324. Third item, I'm requesting to initiate public improvement 5325, 2019, which is the 2019 seal coat improvement project. And also requesting, or council order the plans and specifications for public improvement 5325.
All right. With that, in springtime, we're all aware of the roads. And so I, do we have any questions on?
We've all offered a motion.
Okay, any, okay. Any other questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion is carried. Thanks, Brian, for taking care of that.
Thank you.
Item number 10, we have a building, oh, sorry, yes.
Consent?
Item number 10, building permit update from Mr. Schutzle.
Good morning, Your Honor and council. So we, at the request, I put some numbers together to show our first quarters compared from 18 to 19. So far this year, we're, we're starting off really well. And talking with multiple developers and contractors in the city, we're going to continue to have a good year. Does anybody have any questions? I provided the projects and locations and the cost estimates for both years for a comparison in that packet as well.
Your Honor.
Thanks, Jason.
Jason, maybe for the sake of people watching on TV, could you just reiterate what the first quarter numbers are this year compared to last year, so the viewers would have a good idea of what kind of a good year it looks like?
You bet. So in 2019, right now, we have $3.4 million going into new buildings, two new buildings right now for the first three months of the year. Last year at this time, we had zero. Remodeling this year in commercial buildings is $289,882, where last year, the investment for commercial buildings was more into the remodel phase for $1.9 million. So we're seeing a switch from remodeling to some new construction. Residentially, last year at the, last year at this time, we had zero houses on the docket. And then for 2019, we already have two. And I've spoken to multiple developers, and our housing market this year is going to be really well. Can't discuss that right now, but they're out there, they're looking, and they're interested. They're pretty happy with our city. So it's a good, a good sign. Remodeling is about the same for the two quarters. Residentially, from 18 to 19, about $200,000 on each side. But as for all permits from commercial and residential from 19 to 18, we're up just about $2 million from last year. So it's a huge improvement.
Thanks, Jason, for giving us the break telling for the viewers on the TV to, to get those numbers. Do we have any questions or comments for Jason?
Jason, just one, one question on a specific project that's kind of visible because it's so right in the middle of town. The old Trinity Church, side roofing work going on over there the other day. Is that going to be residential or commercial, or how is that going to be?
Right now, all they're working on is repairing the building to get it ready to find a use for it. That's, that's where we're at with that.
So it's not a store going in there or apartments? We just don't know yet.
We just, we haven't defined what we're going to do in there yet.
Thank you.
Anthony, do you have a?
I think it'd just be, well, reiterating that, obviously, last year we were at 2.2 million, and this year we're at 4.2 million, just to give people a concept of what the $2 million increase is. So if we can maintain that, that'll be good.
Pretty good. That's right. All righty. Well, thanks for the update.
Have a great day.
Do we have any additional items to come before us today? Now, we'll go over the miscellaneous announcements. Today, April 11, excuse me, tomorrow, April 11, we have a State of the City address at 6:30 PM at the ACAP.
Galleries? Center for the Earth.
Center for the Earth. Sorry about that. April 13, we have the library grand opening at 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So please, families, bring your kids, everybody come to the library and see what we have to offer there. April 15, we have our city council meeting at 5:30 in the city council chambers. Nothing to come before us, meeting is adjourned.